Ian Thomas from the Hoop Magazine. Here talking with Murdo Martinez, candidate for the Board of Ed. Green Party, yes?
Yep.
Yeah.
Republican cross endorsed.
Excellent, excellent. Well, let's start with like a little background.
Okay.
Like where are you from? How'd you get here?
Where am I from? Originally from New Jersey, Fort Lee, New Jersey. And went to school in Westchester, New York. Went to Boston, lived in New York City. And then after New York City, it was time to do the house and kids kind of settle down kind of thing. And this is the spot we chose, New London.
What drew you to New London?
A house that we could afford and art stroll.
The art stroll?
An art stroll. We had been looking, and we didn't have a town that we wanted. We'd been looking for many, many, we'd been looking for a couple of years actually, and nothing fit us. And saw online this little house for 135,000. It was a stone house. And Jesse's an artist, I'm a teacher, no big income. And that seemed impossible. And we drove, we did a drive-by. It was called, in this town that I had no idea, it was called New London. I didn't know what that was, you know? So let's look it up and do a drive-by. We drove by, and the house was cute offset, but then when we drove through the town, there was art stroll going on, and we saw all these galleries open. And we said, this is the spot, this is the town. We called up a Realtor the next day, and the next house she showed us was her house.
Nice.
Yeah, so art stroll.
And then so what year was that? Did you move there?
2002.
2002.
I think, yeah. Because it couldn't have been one, because I was in New York City for 2001.
Okay. So when you moved into town, you were working as a teacher?
Yeah.
You worked in the public school system for a while?
Yeah, I worked at Benny Dover for a few years. Worked at Edgerton. Must have, I don't know if it was its last year.
Yeah, that's a school on Cedar Grove?
Closed up?
Yeah.
Space?
Just off of Coleman Street?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. And I was a part of the dual language in its conceptual stage, and then also when it opened up, so I was part of that for three years.
Okay. And then what, I guess you transitioned away from working in education.
Oh, why?
Well, yeah. And what did you end up doing?
I think there were a number of factors, and I like that. It's the way things, I think, go, like when just things are set up for what it needs to be. I mean, at least that's kind of how I function.
As far as like a myriad of reasons kind of combining?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
You can tell what to choose, yeah?
Yeah, so I had my second child.
Okay.
And I realized that it was not ideal for me to be, just the way that I function, I'm kind of like, I put my all into teaching. I really enjoy it, and I get to know my kids, my students, and it wasn't, it wasn't a good fit for me to be, being a teacher and being, even though I was only working part-time, but still, I couldn't do that and raise my kids. I felt like I wasn't, that last year that I taught, that it wasn't fair for how I like to teach. I like to devote myself to it, you know? So I said that that was it. It was also that the Dual Language Arts Academy was going to learn. It started off as a New London school, it was going to learn.
Learn is an acronym for a larger...
An inter-district kind of district.
Inter-district district?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
But...
That sounds like a rabbit hole.
So it was go, it was leaving the New London Public Schools and going towards learn, and it's not necessarily I wanted to be a part of. I wanted to stay within the system. I enjoyed like working within the town. And so those two reasons. And I think for a long time, I had felt the constraints of being a teacher and wondering why certain things go that way, and being told that that was, you know, decisions from the board, and being frustrated on how some things went. And so a myriad of things. And it was just time for growth within that space, wanting to, you know, figure out the education piece. Like I said, it's a, it's a big deal to me. I'm really passionate about it. It's a, it's a large, large focus in my life for really myriad reasons. And so I needed to leave that to kind of understand it from another perspective.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why.
Okay. And what did you end up doing? What was your new job?
I took some time to be focused with my kids. My little guy was probably six months old when I left, he's tiny. And then now I am, so something that struck that made sense to me was, within teaching, it really made sense to me to attend to the whole person, whole child, not to be necessarily artificially teaching what is, what needs to be in a curriculum and having that be a constraint, but having the space to say with this group, to discover with this group, and this is where you want to go with it. Or emotionally even, like let's say, I was teaching in the middle school when I left teaching, and in the middle school, you know, it's a place of great social discovering and transition and growth, you know?
To say the least.
Yeah, middle school, yeah, to say the least, exactly. Some people are like, whoa, middle schoolers, you know? And you need to be able to attend to that, I think. I think that in order to learn, you need to, in order to teach to learn, you need to be able to, like if you're, if you're not feeling emotionally sound okay, you're not going to be focusing. I don't care where that state is located or, you know, what's going on.
You're speaking from the student's perspective?
Yeah, 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 for anyone actually, for anyone's perspective, you know? Like if you're not emotionally okay, if you're not in...
If you're not in a good space, you're not going to be able to...
Yeah, you might not be able to focus on this interview, you know?
Right.
So anyway, needing a space in a classroom, which I felt like I did enough, like I had the space, but, but in general, I don't think that schools are set up that way. You have a lot of systematic, you know, administrative kind of situations where they believe that you should only be focusing on curriculum. But the problem is, if, like I said, if you don't focus on certain social emotional aspects, that you cannot focus on the curriculum. So you're, you're talking to no one.
Right, then not really that...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So within that, I, I like the idea of, and also, so my last placement in the Dual Language Arts Academy, it was very, so it's language, it's Spanish, English, a dual language setting, and it was also arts integration. And we used to walk a lot to downtown and integrate with the community. The kids really knew places downtown, and I think community members knew my little group and would wave to them and stop and talk to them. And I saw how important that was. It was important for the students to have that real-life setting in which to fit the context of whatever it is that they were learning. It became, it became more important, more investing. And I also thought that it was important for the community to know who our students were and not have that, you know, the, it could have those misconceptions of what our students may be perhaps, but there was this real group of people who walked down, you know, walked down Bank Street and, you know, you see those faces and, you know, interact with them, and therefore, there is a different investment in two ways. So anyway, I felt the need for, I wanted to be in a space where, where what we're learning, what we're working on is in that, within that real-life setting.
Yeah.
Which I felt was really, we were able to do that first year at the Dual Language Arts Academy under, we were able to do that at the first year at least. But anyway, now I'm working at Fresh New London and working with youth there. I mean, it is, there, it's not a school, but it is real-life situations, working with youth, creating, looking to create change in the community and learning, you know, like I said, social issues are important to our youth, our adolescents, middle school adolescents, and working on issues of justice that they relate to that well. So wanting to attack that from that other, education from that other perspective, even though it's not about education, you know, per se, it's not a school.
Right, right.
But...
It's like experiential, integrated...
It's food justice, you know, kind of work, but...
But it ties in with lots of other things.
But yeah, in order to do that, in order to involve people and young people in that area, it's not just the, it is the experience, and that's a big part of education. It's the experience of being out in the farm and growing your stuff and feeling, you know, the surge of being in the farm for a few hours and feeling energized, but it's also the having to take a step back and have a workshop and a conversation to help you understand the how and why of what you're doing out there and how it connects to other areas, because these areas of, you know, the thing about local organic food, it really isn't just about, you know, a preference of a nice little market like Littlehead, you know? There's so many other topics that are encompassed there about justice. And so it's really exciting for, I think, young people to, it's exciting for me to like try to get a hold of that with young people and for them to do that as well.
And to see them embrace it and understand it and then take it forward on their own way.
And also make a choice to be there, which is fun, which I love education to be more choice-driven, you know? I mean, we're all just innately curious beings. And so if we've, if we've got that already, like just take advantage of it and where do we go with that kind of thing?
And then Fresh also, as part of their program, they bring food out into the community. They sell at local markets?
Yeah, 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 yeah. We have a CSA program, a community-supported agricultural program, where people buy shares prior to the growing season. You can buy a full share or a half share, and you get it weekly throughout, I don't know if it's June through end of October, or when it is, but weekly. And, or a half share, which is a smaller portion depending on your family size. And then there's, and then there's the mobile market, which goes into areas of less access perhaps, like senior living over in Gordon Court, to be able to bring reduced-priced organic, like kind of farmer's market value food to produce to areas that have less access.
Nice.
Yeah. And hopefully to add to that, and speaking to the education pieces, is having some youth at those sites doing outreach to, you know, share what they're learning and also concretize what it is that they're, that they're learning. And, and bring other people into the, to the area, because it is an area that I think a lot of people don't even realize that it isn't, it isn't just, you know, it isn't just that some people have access to, to let's say, that type of food, that's whole, that's what it, what it belongs to them. Or it isn't just that seeds, you know, something so basic that sustains us, you know, our living, you know? That seeds can be patented and therefore illegal as well, you know, for someone else to have. It isn't just that schools like the New London Public Schools do not have programs like, the food programs, like let's say, even though we're good under, you know, I guess state standards, but we don't have programs like that the Essex Deep River Chester has, where they have, you know, fresh pizza dough from their local pizzeria kind of thing, you know? So that isn't just, because our kids are, you know, I don't know if it's 98% free and reduced lunch, qualified for free and reduced lunch, or, you know, the percentage of...
98?
I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's actually a number, but large percent also minority, you know, yeah. So that isn't just, you know?
No, yeah. Well, we'll set that aside for...
Okay.
No, thank you. That's actually a conversation that I've been meaning to have with you for quite some time.
Okay, we jumped a little bit.
A follow-up to the other video projects. But in regards to the, to the Board of Ed...
And we'll have you set that one.
Hmm?
We'll have you set that conversation.
Yes, yeah, yeah, we should do that. In regards to the Board of Ed, and, you know, your desire to run for the position, what drove you to that decision? Or what informed your decision? What made you want to become a candidate? And you've done this before, right?
I have. I ran two years ago, and I got 1,100 something votes, which is really close, as a green, just a green last time.
Yeah.
I think I spoke to that a bit, because of the desire to change certain things that are going on in our educational system or...
Same disagreements with the system?
Yeah, yeah. I think a lot of decisions that are made, I understand that the Board is not the educational driving force, that that's, that's up to the administration, but I think that, I mean, not I think that, we obviously, or the Board, not we, not yet, the Board obviously affects, I say, I think I say "we" because through New London Parent Advocates, I've been working with the Board for, with the Board as in speaking to, informing and so much, so I do, I do feel like it's a "we" just to...
And theoretically, the Board serves the public.
Yeah, yeah, so it is a "we", yeah, you're right. So even though the Board's role is not to make the educational decisions, the decisions that the Board makes does inform the educational system.
Right.
And so I see a lot of decisions being made that don't consider what we know about how people learn, you know? And that's something that I can, that I can bring to it, you know? I mean, obviously not everything to it, but I am an educator and I do have experience in, like I said, working with the Board in sort of a formal way of trying to inform. And as far as my decision during the past two years, so I ran last time, didn't get on, and then actually, being, starting New London Parent Advocates, co-founder of New London Parent Advocates, there's so much that I felt has gone, we've been able to move with, with the group, that I actually did for a long time not know whether I was going to run or not, because I didn't know if it was most productive for me to be working on the system from the outside and trying to engage new families in the system, or from the, you know, from the inside or the outside, didn't know which was most productive. And I don't think there's a perfect answer to it, but the ball is rolling and I'm excited for the possibilities that are, that are out there.
Excellent, excellent. What do you think would be the most compelling reason to vote for you?
The most compelling reason to vote for me, it's like saying, why are you the best candidate, right? I don't know if you can ever say the word "the best".
Maybe we should rephrase the question. Three criticisms of the school district and three solutions.
Okay. I tend to work with paper and pen, like I write notes because I start thinking of one thing versus another.
Do you want some? Do you need some? Do you have a notebook?
I do, can I? Let's talk about the magnet school, the transition to the magnet school plan.
Yeah, we can talk about that.
Well, I'm not against it, and I can see real benefits. Obviously, the one that's always thrown out there is the monetary, you know, the reimbursement that we'll get back from the state, and so obviously, we can use that. We've been flat-funded, you know, that's arguable to some people if we've had like this slight percentage that won't even cover contractual increases. So some people will say that that means that we're not flat-funded, but to me, that is, we've had teachers, I just spoke to a gym teacher the other day who I've, I worked with at the Dual Language Arts Academy, so she's been around for, I think, seven years, and she's contractually only on year three. So in another district, that would be a little increase every year, you know? She wouldn't be considered a brand name teacher, but that's where she is. So anyway, so meaning that, yes, we do need that reimbursement from the state, that that would be really beneficial to a district like ours. We have buildings that are not well-kept for, and to me, that is a sign of disrespect to our kids. It says that you are not valued like other people in other schools. And then there's the obvious problem of our, our kids in our schools are a great part of color. So then when you look at another district that does, I mean, these are like subliminal messages that we do, that we do send. When you look at a district, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, forget, I forget what district, but you know, other districts that are more, that are white districts and they have more money and their buildings are taken care of, what does that say to our children about who is valued? And I'm not saying that that's a conscious decision to value one or versus another, but, but it is something that does get internalized. And so it's not respectful to have buildings in the conditions that we do. So I do understand the push for the magnet school in that sense. I also...
Do you think it comes with like too many strings attached, or?
No, so...
Right now, from my understanding of it, the money is attached to a conversion to the magnet school format? Like that money...
Well, to getting the right proportions from kids out of district, that's what it's attached to. The other, the other, the other piece of a magnet school district is that we would, that we are going into pathways, is what they call it. So we'll have a kindergarten through 12, that is a pathway of art, another one that's of science, and so on.
How really is it determined?
From kindergarten on, there is an ability to switch. But anyway, my point is to say that I'm fine with that as well, with certain pathways. Like to me, like I said, I taught at the Dual Language Arts Academy, it was super exciting to me. I loved that integration. I don't think that it was necessarily for everyone, but there will be other options. My concern with it is that the reason, this is coming about with the special, the intervention that we have from the state, the Special Master, which a lot of people have a problem with that name, Special Master Steven Adamowski. This is, the push is coming from, from that intervention. And the reason we have that, one of the, one of the reasons that we have that intervention is because we are failing, our schools are, are not succeeding in certain, you know, academically, we're not succeeding. So my concern is that we're not succeeding, and yet, in going to this magnet district, the magnet district plan is about money primarily. I do not hear conversations at the Board level, I don't hear them, the administrative level, about how we're going to, within that change, going to really drastically change our teaching and learning, which is...
The methods.
Yes, which is what I'd love to hear, since that's what we're not succeeding at. Because it is possible to teach through art, have arts integrated, and still not do it in such a way that we're engaging, that we're allowing for the different types of learning and all of that.
Right.
So that really, really concerns me, that we're bringing kids in from other districts, and it's going to look cleaned up in that. They may be bringing other scores, that they'll be bringing perhaps parents that are more involved, that have more time, but what are we really doing for our New London students? I want attention to our New London students and how that should be changing. That's a, that's a big one. I think there's a couple of criticisms wrapped up in that one, you know?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'd like to touch on the methods idea, like, and this ties back into something we were discussing just a few minutes ago, as far as, you know, the holistic approach towards a student versus the standardized formats that seem to be the inevitable rising tide, standardized tests.
I don't know exactly what you're going to ask, but I do know that I immediately want to jump in, because that is a...
Bring it on!
That is another. Criticism is the, and it's not going to be at all schools, and, but I have seen enough of it and heard enough of it in our district, that it is prevalent, that there is a lot of that teaching for the tests, teaching to the tests, and that does not, there's a huge, I, I, once again, like with the magnet school, seeing the advantages but having the concern with testing, I do see a reason for having a certain standard that we might want to compare people to. But we can't do that in isolation of who the people are, you know? There's no reason to do that if we're not at the same time saying, well, how are you, Ian, and does this interest you, and how else can I engage you? And, you know, you know, you seem to sit well, but perhaps if you didn't sit well, you know, what can we do with that situation?
I have my moments when I don't sit well.
Okay, me too. I'm sitting well for these like 20 minutes, but, you know?
The chair itself.
Yeah. So, so, so that really, really concerns me, and I think that, well, I've heard that at the middle school level, I mean, it was in our papers recently, that we've had huge turnover with our teachers, and that the reason, this, this part was not in the paper, this part is I've heard through, through teachers that have left the system, or the few that are still there, at the middle school level, that, that they're not, there's not that space to, to have that creativity. And, you know, teaching is, I wish I had a book on me, there's a, there's a Dr. Seuss book, you know? I love kids' books, there's a, something really prophetic about a Dr. Seuss book that's, I don't know if it's called Diffendufer School or something, silly Dr. Seuss name.
Right.
But, but there's really something to be said, you know, teachers are, you're supposed to have a master's to teach, a decent amount of education, right?
Yeah.
But they're not, teachers are not stamps of one another with those degrees, you know? And there's something to be said for, you know, like with, with each of us, to engage the people, to have that, you know, what is it that I am about, what is it that you're about? And that's what a teacher brings to a classroom, it's not just, it is the content, but it's also how they do that.
Yeah, it's the connection.
It's, yeah, you know, for me, it might be, you know, I mentioned the galleries before, that the art stroll brought me to town. Well, when I happened to first come to town, I remember integrating gallery walk kind of stuff in my classroom, because it was something that was me, therefore exciting, therefore I could, I could bring that to the classroom in such a way that, you know, people wanted to turn their head and said, what's she, what's she talking about? I want to know, because that was where excitement came from, you know? And to have a myriad of, of teachers who can express their, their thoughts, their curriculum through their own experiences and personalities, is part of the vibrancy of what, what makes life exciting, you know? I mean, you know, being able to go out and explore different places, that's what different teachers bring to it. Yes, having a certain bit of standard, but having that creativity and fun and interest in learning. And I think that gets left behind when we, when we only focus on tests and work on worksheets and do that sort of thing. So the testing is another criticism of mine. And I know that it can be done, the multicultural magnet school has the same testing to respond to, to report to. And they do a pretty good job of maintaining the humanistic part of it.
From the Board of Ed position, how much could one do to resist the implementations or the insistence of the Common Core standards, standardized testings, the no child left behind slash race to the top type of bullet point, data-driven...
Well, like I said, it's, it's the same standards that other schools, like the magnet school does have, you know? So those standards are not going to go away, you know? They're not, we're not going to change statewide or nationally what's being required, but it's about creating a certain school environment. What are the policies that create certain priorities within the system? So if the policies state that, you know, let's say, art, the art is an important thing that needs to be valued, or that class size is capped at a much lower size so that there's attention to individual students, I mean, those are policies that the Board can implement to ensure a certain kind of environment.
Okay, excellent. What would you say, from your experience and your studies, the ideal class size would be, say, a ratio, you know, between student and teacher?
It's so hard to come up with one magic number, right? Because...
Right, well, a general range.
I'm going to come up with 18, I don't know.
18?
I mean, right now, we have, we have, I think, K1 classes out of 27, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, that's huge. That's, there's no, there's no space right there to, I mean, no matter how good of a teacher you are, it's, that's really, really, really hard to attend to those needy little people who have lots of, you know, their curriculum, their shoe tying, their... their, they're just individual beings, they're coming in with...
You spend the whole day just tying shoes.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah.
Um, all right, so I think that covers maybe criticism number one.
Okay. No, 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 no. I did magnet school and I did testing.
So, yeah, okay, testing. All right, so, yeah. Number three.
And so probably like the individuality of, like, you know, one bleeds into another, where do they overlap the, oh, okay, no, I've got another one. Good one. Um, why do you have to criticize, why not?
Well, the criticism will open up into the solution.
No, 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 I'm just, I'm just joking with you. I understand. Um, let's see. Here's another one. Like I said to you, teacher needs to have a master's degree.
Okay.
And they are the front of the line with our students, they're the ones in contact with our students. We're going through all of these changes district-wise and the teachers are not a part, a collaborative part of the process. Our teachers should be a collaborative part of the process.
During all the changes, the, the teachers union has no presence?
Oh, I'm not saying the teachers' union. I'm saying the teachers, I'm talking about at our community, I, I don't know what the teachers...
So the teachers' union doesn't actually have a connection to the teachers?
Oh, I'm not, yeah, but that's really different than saying, um, teachers' union is a, it's a union, you know? It's a, it's its own thing, yeah, out there. But I'm saying within a school building, within a school system, it's much more like, those are people that I know, you know? These are, these are, we know one another kind of a thing. Um, and I'm not teaching in the district, obviously, right now, but, but, but I'm saying that's the kind of environment it is. It's a, you know, it's, it's not even, New London is really familiar, but now you're coming down to even a smaller community, right? So within that community, big changes are happening. Those big changes happening, let's take into account this huge wealth of knowledge about what we're talking about, that, so it's the collective of all of these teachers with their degrees and with their day-to-day experience with their kids and their communities, you know? That's huge, that's a hu, that's huge. And administrators, I'm sorry, but you're, they're, they've, they're, they're stepped back from that, you know? So to not take advantage of that, I think is, is absolutely silly. Um, was this...
How would you remedy that?
How would we have the conversations?
Yeah.
I, I don't know exactly how we'd have, how we'd have the conversations, but, um, I don't know, I've, I've never thought, but I know in the classroom how I can sit down and have conversations when, like, yes, ultimately, the, I'm the, you know, the teacher is the authority in a classroom, but yet you could do that if you want, you know, that's your priority if you want to just be the authority in a classroom. But I think you'll move along, um, it's best for everyone if you give some of that up in saying, "You know what? There's things going on right now and let's all move to the round table and have a conversation." So some sort of round table conversation, you know? I don't know if they're, you know, periodic, monthly, you know, this is some kind of a debriefing on what's going on, administrators and district bringing on, this is what we've been planning and teachers coming back to it saying, "Yes, but these are the issues that I see with that." So I don't know if it would be that kind of format, I don't know if it'd be building-wise or, you know, district-wise, I don't know, I haven't thought that up. But I, I do know that, that, um, it's a waste of that pool of knowledge and information and experience that we're not using from our teachers and taking advantage of that in the, in the change, you know? There was a...
To not engage at all?
Yes.
Not make any effort to engage?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah?
Exactly. There was a, an NPR show, probably in the spring, I'm gonna guess, that was about Finland and Korea being the top in the world academically, you know, success. And their question was basically, you know, they had representatives from both of places and their question was, but they're both really, really different styles of teaching. Finland is really laid back, you don't start school till you're seven, no extended hours, not a lot of pressure in that sense, lots of recess between each class at the elementary level, they have fifteen minutes to run around because they understand that the brain needs to be able to process and run around and that's all, you know, they get all of that. And Korea, completely opposite, you know?
Yeah.
Really, yes, strict and extra time and demanding and, so they're so different, what do we, what do they have in common to be the two top in the world educationally? And what I heard from that, you know, perhaps there were other pieces, but the big thing, the takeaway that I had was that they hugely respect their teachers and that they are incorporated into everything. So they have a say in, in, in how you educate.
Right, how the curriculum is created and...
Engagement of our, engagement of teachers' engagement. I mean, if you have a, I think that in any area, that if you're not feeling respected and empowered, you know, like you have something to contribute, then you're actually going to end up contributing less because, because your hands are kind of tied, because you don't have the ability to draw on what Myrna-ness or Ian-ness, you know, really drives you, you know? So you don't, those qualities that best make each of us who are, we are, you know? So, um, I mean, respect is a big thing. I'm gonna go back to that, you know, I spoke about respect when, to, to our population, whether it's our student population or teacher population, you know, our school populations when we take care of our buildings versus when we don't, you know?
Right, right.
So to respect right back in here, I mean, I think that's, um, a good encompassing for many areas, kind of, I'll bring it to another area, we can go to number four.
All right.
So for respect, um, engagement of our families.
Yeah.
Um, engagement of, I won't just say parents, but families or community in, in these areas. Like I said, when I was at the dual language, um, I felt that it was really valuable for the students to engage in the community and the community to engage with our students. And there's buy-in that way for our schools. And I think that, um, you know, and I, I don't know why, but, um, we don't take full advantage in our New London schools, we don't take full advantage of attempting to engage our families. For instance, on Monday is, um, a magnet school forum. Um, so families are invited, well, I think it's in my calendar, so I think, let's say six PM, ten PM, six PM, I'm not sure. We're inviting families over. Um, well, as a parent, the first things you need to think about in the evening are dinner and if I'm going someplace, who's watching my kid? Childcare. So what, if we really want to engage families, we should be offering dinner and it could be something even simple like pizza. Maybe that's not ideal, but that's fine, you know? At least it's something I'm beating you guys for dinner, it's taken care of.
Right.
And, and childcare. And I can engage in this conversation because my kids are being cared for, you know? And that's not being provided. And I don't think it has to do with funding because, you know, we can always move things around for our priorities. And that is a priority to have our families there so that they buy in, so that they give feedbacks, that they engage in ways that we, you know, that's beneficial to their learning, that's beneficial for, um, like I said, for just that buy-in.
That ties back into the humanizing of the...
Yes.
You know, where, where you create a connection between, you know, the home life and the community life and neighborhood and, and the people in the schools providing the education.
Yeah.
For all these people to know each other and, and not see each other as some sort of monolithic stereotype or some monolithic like non-entity that they don't really know. Um, that's, that's, the, the, having a schism is a detriment, having a connection is a benefit.
Yes.
And having people know each other, for better or for worse.
Yeah.
At least you know who that person is, you know, and, yeah.
Yeah, that's what, that's what I enjoy about living in New London, you know? There's the space, it's not too small of a town where you feel like you can't step left, you can't step right, you can't take any step without like, you know, without having a little bit of space, but you also, you get to, um, you know people, you know, you feel connected to it, yeah.
Yeah.
You get to know people.
You get to know the cast of characters.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the whole cast.
Indeed. All right, so let's go to the, uh, the happy ending.
Okay.
Um, what is the, uh, the solutions? We've had the criticisms. Um, what sort of solutions do you see, um, possible? And what do you, what would you advocate for as ways to improve the district?
Well, I think in each of those so-called criticisms, the solutions were right there and attached to them, you know? Like having, in the, in the magnet school district, making sure that we're attending, that we're not just changing to shiny new buildings and that being like a fog screen over, over what really needs to be attended is the educational system, but actually attending to beyond the test scores, attending to those individuals and how those individuals learn, having myriad of, of choice and ability to, having the space in classrooms to be able to see our individuals. So administratively, having, administratively, that being acceptable, being accepted, you know, not having just really...
Recognized as a priority.
Reg, yes, not being regimented kind of schedules and what you need to do each minute, but recognizing that they, maybe a classroom of diverse people who take a project and want to go in a certain direction or that part of the classroom, or that there may be noise in the classroom. I loved it when Hill Teacher once said to me, it's called pedagogic noise, you know? I mean, that's what's gonna happen. If we're like engaging in learning, there's going to be noise so that there could be a group of...
It might get loud.
Yeah, yeah, and that's exciting. Like if it does get loud, like...
Yeah.
That means something's happening, you know?
Exactly, exactly. You know, it's, it's, that's hilarious you mention that and I have an anecdote to share, share with you later about that, some from my subsequent teaching experiences.
Okay.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, so if that loudness is going on over there, but they're creating a film about the ecosystem, then great, go for it. And then, you know, and so be, having the space for that. So part of that is classroom size and part of it is administratively having, um, you know, from up above, having it being okay, it being a priority for people to explore and have a space for all of that. And that, that will reflect on, on test scores if it's done appropriately, if it's done in such an informed way. Um, so that covered the testing and it covered, I'm trying to go back, I didn't write all these points, it covered the testing and it covered the magnet school. Um, as far as the buildings, I do see that, like I said, I find that, because I find the, um, the condition of a lot of our buildings are in, I do find that be, that the magnet school system will help take care of that if we can actually fund ourselves. So, so that's, that's something that's already, I think, um, at least in the works. Um, right now, it's really frustrating for me to see the grounds of some of our schools.
Yeah. Um, yeah, again, back to my subsequent teaching experience recently, I've, I've been in some of these schools and, yeah, it, it is sad, uh, just the environment alone...
Yes.
Speaks volumes.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, if, if we can't provide even a comfortable environment...
Yeah.
For, uh, kids to, to be in...
Yeah.
Uh, then what, where are our priorities? Where's the money?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah.
And I, you know, and it's something that's, you know, some people may speak to an aging population in the town, but our educational system is something that will benefit every single person in our community. If you have children, I guess that's an easy, direct reason why. Um, if you are homeowner and our schools are, um, places that people want to go to, I think that's an obvious, you know, the tax base or people that want to come into a community because of a school district. I mean, it's something that I, you know, I'm still here, but I thought twice about when I was coming to the space where I was having kids, you know? Or my kids were getting to, my, my oldest was getting to school age. Um, uh, and also as far as, you know, having citizens that, you know, helping build citizens that, that are, um, that give back to our community instead of, instead of needing more help, you know? Our school systems are really, they're beneficial for everyone, you know? I don't know the numbers, but, you know, there are clear numbers about how much more costly it is not to educate a child appropriately, much more costly societally later on. I mean, um, I don't know, is there anything that I missed?
I was trying to think of the third one.
Oh, we teach the collaboration of teachers in all the changes.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
And we talked about that, you know?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, yeah, we did cover that, like, just creating a better cohesive connection, you know?
Creating the spaces for people to, no, 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 I don't mean family, as far as the teachers, of the, the collaboration for, um, having teacher input in changes that do go on in the district or, you know, even in just, I can't even say changes, I mean, places are always...
Teachers to the board, teachers to the administration, but...
Places are always changing, you know? Even if we weren't going into a magnet school district, we should constantly be, you know, evaluating what's going on and how it's doing, but having teachers at the table at those. So having, um, space for that dialogue, like what I said, I don't know if it would be quarterly or how it would be, but, but that's really important information that, that we're, that we're missing.
Create some sort of like regular pipeline where that would happen.
Yeah.
Yeah?
I mean, defusing that language, I like it.
All fair game. Um, yeah, and also like, well, the idea that you had about engaging even the education community with the parents and the family and the community, like, there's, there's two levels of connection there that I think we touched on here in this conversation.
Yeah.
That, that would be exciting to consider...
You know...
As, as a reality, as possible.
Art district, um, if I had my laptop open, it has some kind of a website, it says something about treating families as customers or, you know, best customer, customer service kind of a thing.
Right, yeah.
But it's not at all what I've seen in communities where there is more money perhaps, you know, in communities that are not hurting maybe like we are educationally, that are not, that don't have as much poverty. It's not like that. It's not like it is here. There's much more of a sense of customer service. When you, you know, I've worked at a, at a, um, I've worked at schools where it really is, you know, family members come in to the office and it's like, "Oh, yes, you know, what can I help you with? What do you, what do you need?" You know, there's real attention to what their needs are and, and dialogue and obviously there are things that are just rules and they are what they are, but there's, there's a respect for who you are coming in.
Yeah.
And, um, I don't, I don't necessarily see that and I'm not saying that this is, I'm not saying that it's a district-wide flaw, policy flaw or anything like that, but I do think that it, it's more of like a cultural thing that develops, you know? Like if we are able to engage our families more and have them be a part because we are providing childcare and dinner and, you know, we are truly making it easy for our families and families truly do engage, then, um, the culture builds upon itself, you know? Because they become people on the other end that we want to be respectful to as well. And then those people also feel that voice that is true and so therefore there's, there's demand and in a positive way, you know? So, hmm, so, yeah, that's something that's need improvement and I can, I can see happen. There's no reason for it not to.
Right. Excellent, excellent. All very exciting stuff and I'm glad to know that you're running and there's a voice like yours in the conversation.
Thank you, Ian.
Yeah. Thank you for coming down.
Thank you.
And, uh, I look forward to following your campaign further.
Okay. If anyone needs a lawn sign.
Yeah, actually, anything you want to say to the public at large?
Um, well, yeah, right now I'm making a list for lawn signs, so if anybody does want a lawn sign, um, that is what I'm creating. And, um, anything else that you would like to help with, contribute funding, um, in contact with the Green Party?